Is there, I mean, something I don't-
I have concerns about the weekend. Having a resolution against the budget just as we're responding to this weekend.
They wouldn't have to worry about sequence. I don't know if I'll follow that one, I guess.
Did anyone ask him?
We issued some, too. We issued some for the fire station and for the electric projects. Ten million.
Well, we're thinking in team.
It is the season.
I don't care.
There's something about Dallas, they wouldn't have to worry about sequence. Yeah, I don't know. I was in, uh, New York County.
I think we need to know some answers.
So, Jason and Michael are here that can help answer this question. We just found out about this Friday. Whatever it was. Hate to have to dig rush stuff like this, but I mean, it's not like Congress is giving us a lot of time to look into this stuff.
We got a country that's way out of kilter, spending way too much money. Somebody's gotta take the heat from the decisions. If we're gonna reduce a resolution every dang gum week, two weeks, against the budget. Would that have been something else to, I mean-
One minute, one minute.
I hear you.
Call a meeting to order, please. Call a row, please.
Mr. Buckner, Reverend Campbell, Mayor Gilstrap-
Aye.
Vice Mayor-
Here.
Vice Mayor Jones-
Here.
Dr. Miller. Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Please stand for the invitation and pledge allegiance led by Dr. Gutterick Miller.
Dear Lord, Creator of all around us, we thank you for the bountiful gifts you've given us. You've carved out majestic mountains, wide plains with bountiful food and grain, vast oceans that are teeming with food for us. You've given us the knowledge to build bridges across rivers, giant skyscrapers to live and work in, cars and trains to cross the wide plains, satellites to have worldwide communications. All these things you have given to us or given us the knowledge to make. Yet, we're unhappy, we're angry. Our souls are restless. People kill and maim for no apparent reason. They lash out at their fellow man. They're angry at people because of their religion, because of their race. They even kill their own family members. What do we need, Lord, to obtain peace in our souls? We must have peace, we must quieten the anger. If not, Lord, we risk destroying our environment, destroying our fellow man, the inhabitants, the other animals and birds of this planet. We risk destroying our own species. Lord, we need your help. It seems we cannot do this alone. Lord, we need guidance and we need peace in our souls. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Citizens who desire on matters not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Citizens who desire to speak on agenda items will be heard when the agenda item is considered. Anyone wish to speak on items not on the agenda? Please come forward, state your name and purpose. Speak into the microphone, please.
My name is Ray Hayes and good evening to you council members, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to have the opportunity to come before this body and I, as we often hear as previous service time that we've experienced, thank you for your service. Well, I think sometimes it's one matter that's left needing to be said and thank you for your service to our community. I come before you this evening with a situation having to do with property that I own. The pictures that are before you, I didn't have enough to bring one at each station over here, but I think everyone has beyond on this side, having to do with a building located at 854 Holbrook Street. It is the only building there in the 800 block and those pictures will show you the vantage point from the southern side of Industrial Avenue as well as other points leading up to the railroad track. It is nestled right beside the railroad track there on Holbrook Street. I've owned this building for thirty years and it's been used mainly as storage, but about a year ago, a Mr. Nathaniel Johnson, owner of the Yellow Cab Company, came to me in total desperation that he could not find a place to operate his cabs as far as the maintenance thereon. He was in dire need at the time. And so, I began an arrangement with him and it has gone low these number of months and only recently did I receive a communication from the Department of Public Works that I had thirty days to get every one of his vehicles off the lot and that it was providing a public ugliness, if you will, to the property. I called the young man whose name was affixed to that letter and I said, "Do you, did you really take a good look at the property and how these cabs in disarray are in need of repair, some on the lot?" I said, "Did you take a look at it?" And he said, "Yes." I said, "Did you notice that there is a wire fence by the roadside? If you find it so unsightly, could we not put some sort of a screen there on that property so that it doesn't create a nuisance or an eyesore?" And he said, "I think it's a very good idea, Mr. Hayes." He said, "Let's go ahead with that plan, I'll go back and tell my superior the same." Well, within hours, there was a call that came back to me from the young man. I called him and he says, "My superior says that he cannot allow you to do what you and I have agreed, at least in discussion, to do." And I said, "Well, is this gentleman available?" And he was made available to me by phone and I said, "Sir, this gentleman has no other place for his cab company. He is very much in demand by his own legion of people who-" They don't, he doesn't advertise, they don't have any communication. Oftentimes, it's just, "I know when Mrs. Smith is wanting to go get her groceries, et cetera, et cetera." I said, "Can't you show some leniency there?" He says, "No, we don't allow that sort of thing to occur in our four-lane highways." I said, "Sir, you're speaking of Industrial Avenue, that's one block away from me." He said, "Well, you're right on the corner." I said, "No, sir, I'm nestled up adjacent to the railroad." And so, that gave me no other course to follow than to appear before you tonight, asking some help, some leniency. At this present time, I understand at last report that Mr. Johnson is in rehab, he is in very poor health and his wife and daughter are attempting to carry on with the business and not to be in a facetious manner and yet, it's pointed to all of us once to take that trip to the hereafter. And both Mr. Johnson and I are getting now onto that, so if we could have a couple of years' lenience on that regard, it would be greatly, greatly appreciated.
Are there any questions of Mr. Hayes? I do have one. How many vehicles are on the lot?
I think at present, four or five. He, yes, sir.
I was looking at the picture and I could identify at least four.
Well, he had more.
All these vehicles are, none of them, or any of them have up-to-date tags and are safety stickered? Are they all in bad shape?
There are none with tags on at present. He's eliminated several of the units because as he had the lot much fuller this year, earlier, and the young folks coming across the railroad track, they get choice rocks and they've knocked out all the windshields and all the windows and so, he's, it's by that type of attrition that they, some of the vehicles are gone. He does keep, I allow him, I have a one bay garage there at the end of the lot that he uses for the repairs.
Are there, there's not room in the storehouse for all the vehicles? I mean, in the warehouse?
Sir?
Is there room for the vehicles in the warehouse?
Oh, no, sir, no, sir, I only have one bay for him to do his repairs.
Any questions of Mr. Hayes? Then, I'm with City Manager Ken Larkin, if you'll review this or Deputy City Manager, somebody get with Mr. Hayes and see what the complaints are and how we might resolve them. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to you all.
And happy Thanksgiving to you. I enjoyed seeing you at the Veterans Luncheon.
Quite a thing, and you were nice enough to dance for all of us to see how you young people can dance.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Shanks had a question.
I'm sorry, Councilman Shanks.
Mr. Hayes, I'm sorry, I didn't get attention, his attention quick enough. Okay, you're renting the whole warehouse to-
No, sir, just that basement, the back half of the building. The rest of the building is with my junk that I've acquired over the years, some antiques and furniture and things of that nature. I've used it for storage back when I had a construction company, so there's construction material or whatever also.
Is there, is there any other cab operation handled out of this property? The property that you're talking about?
No, sir.
It's just for storage?
Just his one, his one company, yes, sir.
Since it's just for storage, there's no business license involved for him in this location?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Good evening. My name is Renita Towns, 118 W Court. I think you needed an address. To the Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmen-at-Large, and to all others who are due honor. Again, my name is Renita Towns and I'm here to comment regarding the name change for the Danville Public Library. When I heard of the possibility of the library being named for Ms. Ruby B. Archie, I was and remain 100% in favor of the change. I wanted to find out more information and how I could help. The September 11th, 2017 article from the Register and Bee had been attached to a Facebook posting. That article spoke of members of the Danville City Council floating the idea. It also said a petition would be needed with seventy-five signatures of Danville City residents who were registered voters. The young lady who attached the article could not pursue the task because she was a county resident. I asked her what was needed and where to get the petition, thinking it was one thing I could do to honor a lady who was well-known and beloved in Danville, Virginia. I obtained the petition from the clerk's office and I did question Ms. Sue Demasi about the last paragraph of the application which addressed cost. She explained that she did not think it would apply in my case and that it would, that it would apply if other things were being done outside of changing the name. I told her I was looking only for a name change. She mentioned the city attorney was not there at the time and if I needed more information, he could provide it. I thought her answer was sufficient. I worked with Sue, excuse me, Ms. Demasi before and I think she's a very knowledgeable woman, so that was sufficient for me. The time was the middle of September 2017. On November 16th, 2017, that afternoon, I got a call from Ms. Demasi advising the Memorial Commission would meet on November 17th, 2017, at 2:00 P.M. and that she had talked to the city attorney, who confirmed as the applicant, I would be responsible for the cost. We spoke of GoFundMe and other possibilities of raising the funds. However, all of the news had caught me off guard because I had had no notice. I had called the clerk's office around the first of November 2017 to make sure she had gotten the petition and make sure it was in order. She informed me then that she'd gotten it and it would be back, and she would be back in touch for when the commission would meet. When she called me the day before the meeting, she apologized for the short notice because of the power outage of the city for two days and I told her I could not be there at the start of the meeting because of my job, but I would be there as soon as possible. I also told her I would send my mother to be there when the meeting started. As I began to think about the conversations, I decided I would ask for more details at the meeting regarding my responsibility to pay costs for the name change of a public building when the idea was floated in the city council meeting. When the process started, all I wanted was to have the building named in honor of Ms. Archie because she taught, well, Ms. Archie, this hope remained. A quick perusal of my narrative shows I only spoke of naming the building for Ms. Archie because she taught English in the Danville Public Schools for nearly forty years and she served as a public servant in the Danville, in the Danville Schools, excuse me, servant in Danville for sixteen years as well as mayor. The narrative did not discuss sororities with which she had been affiliated, other groups, race, nor political affiliations. My narrative only mentioned how she contributed to Danville, Virginia, and what an asset she had been to the citizens of Danville. When obtaining the 151 signatures for the petition, my focus was and remains naming the Danville Public Library, the Ruby B. Archie Memorial Danville Public Library. In regard to the cost, I believe the cost of naming the building is a cost normally borne by the City of Danville when a building is named. Section 2-308 speaks of additional costs not normally borne by the City of Danville. There is no additional cost to place a name City Council has chosen for this building. I'm not looking for a room, a plaque, a picture, or any other thing to honor her other than what the City of Danville would pay to name any other building here in the city. I'm not looking for an exception to a rule here. I would expect the City of Danville to do the same thing for someone who has contributed in a like manner because it is the right thing to do. This situation is not political, racial, soror, or familial. It is all about a citizen of Danville asking the City of Danville to honor one of its own. If the Memorial Commission or some other entity wishes to make the honor more than I have previously described, then I will revoke my application and give someone or some organization the opportunity to raise funds for a memorial or tribute considered more fitting. It has never been my intent to be in charge of fundraising. I only wanted to honor this Danvillian. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you. I don't know if anyone here has an answer to this, but when they changed the name of Green Street Park to Doll Thomas Park, who paid for the signage and the bust or form there honoring Doll Thomas? Do we, do you know that?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know who ended up paying for it, but Law Baptist Church said that it would be responsible for all cost. But there's also a marker out there as well, paid for by the church.
And that may- I'm sorry, pardon?
There's also a marker out there as well, but the church, as I understand, will gonna pay for it.
And that may have been done prior to the formation of the Memorial Commission?
Well, the reason I asked is that is primarily the reason the commission was formed was because of the controversy over Green Street, Dr. Green are renaming it Doll Thomas. And I just wondered if we have any records of the payment of that. Since then, since that time though, the renaming of buildings have all been... Who's responsible putting the names on the buildings?
We have had a number of applications and I don't recall any applications being approved to rename any buildings. In fact, the meeting on last Friday was probably the fir-, is absolutely the first meeting we have had since Mrs. Archie chaired it.
What about the courthouse? What about the courthouse?
Oh, that's right, that's right. I take that back. And the Danville Bar Association paid for all the signage at the courthouse.
What about the financial center?
That was, that was done long before even-
So, the Ingram Court Building is the only one?
That's the only one.
And who paid for that?
I think the Danville Bar Association paid for that.
The Danville Bar Association?
It was the Danville Bar Association's application.
Okay, thank you wherever you are for the presentation and we will discuss this further and see. I am not one for going against policy, but we can certainly address the policy if that, if you interpret the policy that the person, that someone else has to put the sign up. Councilman Shanks?
I'm sorry, I did not look at the library when I came in today and I see it every day, but I don't look up at the sign. Is there a sign there that says Danville Public Library or on the building?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I needed tonight. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I wanted to see maybe the city manager could just clarify for everyone's knowledge in case they don't know. The ordinance that we're referring to, Ken, I'll give you a chance in a second to maybe explain for those who are watching who may not have had the chance to know what we're referring to in the ordinance, but if I'm not mistaken, was adopted in 2001 and was actually voted into place and put into place when Ruby Archie was on City Council. So, the ordinance we're referring to was put in place when Mrs. Archie was a council member. Correct?
From my understanding, we did some research today, Mr. Demasi did, and I'm just looking at her to confirm that, yes.
And can you just clarify for everyone what the ordinance says or roundabout what it says, just so that everyone knows what we're talking about, so we're not-
Sure. The basics of it are that if, you know, you have a couple options to ask for something to be renamed. One is to give a significant contribution of funds to have something named and that you can get something named in that way. The other is to make application and get a certain number of signatures. But if it's going through that process, the person that's made the application is responsible for any cost above and beyond what would be normal for the government to provide. And in this case, since the building already exists and already has signage, adding words to the sign is an expense above and beyond what the city government would normally pay. So, that means that the person or the group that made the application would have, would be responsible for raising the funds to pay for that cost.
I have someone, excuse me.
Go ahead. Well, I just wanted to say real quick, I chaired the commission, of course, that the mayor put together and we had a great meeting and great feedback from all those who were involved with it and it was universal support in favor of adding Ruby Archie's name to the library. And I don't think there's been any dispute about that. I think the only conversation has been about how it happens and who makes it happen. But I think that just from the feedback I've gotten in the several days since, I think that there's community support to raise those funds without a problem. I guess, maybe as opposed to it falling on one individual, maybe if there's a group or however that gets put together. But I don't think the issue of raising the amount of funds that are needed to have the sign on the outside, but there was a lot of talk about wanting to have a plaque to tell her story and all that. I think there's groups of people who will want to make that happen. So, I just, I'm, I think it's a great thing to honor her in that way, to have her name added to the library. As has been mentioned by many, her life was about education and improving the education of others and improving the lives of those around her. So, I feel it's very appropriate for her name to be attached to the library. Just in terms, we're talking about this ordinance though, I think it's important that, you know, we be consistent with what we do. And again, it's an ordinance that was put in place by Mrs. Archie in part. So, I want to make sure that we're consistent in what we've done in previous years.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Ms. Towns, thank you so much. Oftentimes, we talk about what young adults in our community are doing to help our community. Thank you so much. Ken, the question that I have is, is there a possibility, when Ms. Towns made her presentation, she stated that she's not a fundraiser. Is there a possibility, starting soon, that we can get a cost? Because I have to agree with Ms. Towns, she don't know the variances and all the laws and rules of how large the sign has to be and we heard what exactly she wanted. Can we go and get the cost of exactly what kind, the sign for the city, and get that cost to the persons on the committee and then let's see if we can go from there? I would hate for her to give up at this point because as Lee stated, there are a lot of people out there that once we put that cost out there, I'm sure they respect Ms. Archie, would be willing to perform with it, help with that cost.
I want to remind council, I do not want to get the cart before the horse here, okay? It's still, the committee has to make a recommendation and it has to be approved by City Council and then it would take effect. But until council approves it, it's not.
But, Mr. Mayor, if I could, if I could piggyback off that, the reason I'm asking-
I think it will be. I'm not saying it won't be. I think it will be, but we just need to make it official.
But the reason that I want that cost is going forward, we will know whether it's approved or not approved, we'll know exactly more information, just in case this come before us again.
I think that gave us an estimate of about five grand.
Well, Mr. Jones, and I'm sure the city manager would say this, one of the things the committee asked for and the city manager is providing is not only a cost, but a rendering of what the sign would look like. That is gonna be provided to the committee. Because the committee has to approve that as well.
Very good, that's good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Clark.
Councilman Miller?
I was at the meeting the other day, I think it was a conflict, you know, one was the signage just to name for Ruby Archie and the other one was the plaque, which was suggested by some of the committee members and that was several thousand dollars. And I'm not sure the city should bear the cost of that, but I do think there are people out there, myself- out there, myself included, would be glad to donate for a plaque for her. We have to remember that there's circling waters out there, there's other movements to rename other buildings in town. And we'll be here, I'm sure the committee's going to hear those soon. So we have to be careful about paying for all of these out of city funds. I don't think the cost of the, I didn't hear, maybe I was wrong, that it was five thousand dollars just for the sign, just the naming sign. It seemed to be the plaque that was expensive.
We were, it's all a guess, we're still trying to gather that information, but we'll get a-
Can you give us the cost?
We will.
That's something we have to have.
Councilman Saunders?
I think, Mr. Mayor, that Mrs. Archie was the mayor at the time the commission was appointed for this. Talked about whether the person should be alive or deceased, et cetera. I don't know or remember a set fee, a set cost. And the Reverend Thomas situation, his church said it would pay for the cost. So is there a set fee, or does that depend on the facility, the name, the lettering, et cetera? That's what I would like to know.
It depends. It would depend, in this case, you'd want to have a sign that matched the rest of the sign, so there would be a specific cost associated with making sure that that sign matched.
Can we not pay somebody five thousand dollars for-
So the cost would, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
So the cost would depend on the facility, the size of the sign, what kind of a sign, so there's no way to be a set fee? That's what I'm hearing.
Yep, there's no way to know ahead of time or to include it in the ordinance or the application process.
So if someone make an application, at the time the application is made, do they need to say, "I will be responsible," or a committee will be responsible? Does that decision have to be made at the time of the application?
I'm not sure it has to be made at that time, but it's probably good practice to make the applicant aware of that, and that there would be potentially a time going forward where the community would be asked to raise some money. And, you know, a lot of these cases, you're naming a building after somebody who's important to the community, who has played a critical role and meant a lot to people that live here, so a lot of times it will be a group of people that raise money to pay for that. So making that applicant aware that this is not a cost that the city would pay for, but that they would be responsible, or somebody would be responsible for raising funds would be good practice going forward.
Let me suggest that the procedure here, city attorney, will this be a work session agenda item, or will it be just on a council agenda item? Renaming. I'm just going to not rename, that is not name, just naming.
It will be up to council at that point. The chairman will write a letter to the clerk, the clerk will then inform the council that it's been, that it's been brought to them, and the council has to act within 60 days after that letter comes to the clerk, and then it'll be up to you all to determine whether you want a work session at first and then do it, or whether you just want to rename it.
Councilman Vogler?
Mayor, if I may, real quick, just to give everybody a status update on where we are with the committee. We had asked that the city manager, as was mentioned, get the estimated cost for the sign then to have a rendering done so that not only can we talk about, but you can visually show what it'll look like, which we felt would be helpful in that fundraising effort. And that we had hoped to get that back in the next couple of weeks and have that information. We're working on lining up the date for our next meeting, which we plan to have in December. We haven't got a set date yet, but we're trying to get everybody lined up. And as soon as we have that, we plan on making the final, you know, recommendations at that meeting to then give over to-
But let me suggest that we put this on the work session agenda, and we can, at that time, give it a straw poll. Anything else?
Just want to add to what-
On the communication from visitors?
Just real briefly to add to what Councilman Vogler said, we're also going to make sure that whatever sign is put up there is in compliance with our sign ordinance.
Well, and I think I read, and I think, or someone told me, that it has to be approved by the River District.
That's true, yes.
Yes, sir.
So, okay. Anyone else wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward. Hearing none, we'll move on to the agenda items. First, I would request that we have another resolution to add to the agenda. Councilman Vogler, would you, are you making that motion to add an item to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I move that we add the following to tonight's agenda. A resolution to urge the President of the United States and the United States Congress to ensure that adoption of the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act does not negatively impact the city of Danville.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by Councilman Saunders, any discussion? Yes.
Mayor, I have concerns that every meeting since the last two have produced a resolution to oppose the Congress to do what they have been elected to do. Everyone in this country is involved and impacted by what the budget of the United States includes or does not include. Everyone is a stakeholder in something. Everyone is a stakeholder in a whole lot of things. And I just am concerned about the city of Danville producing a series of resolutions that are opposed to the government's attempt to bring spending under control. Now, I'm very concerned about the issue at hand, and I don't know whether I should vote for the city of Danville as a whole, or whether I should vote for the people who voted for me. So it's a difficult task, it's a very conflicting task. But I will say this, however the vote, however I choose to vote, I'm not, I'm not in agreement with every two weeks passing another resolution to cherry pick what the city of Danville is going to oppose in the tax reform. I don't recall us ever being so active in federal or state legislation. These are trying times, and I understand there are some different issues, but I am certainly not in favor of the city taking single-sided positions on tax reform. Thank you.
Well, the, the motion was made, did I get it?
That was just-
And Councilman Saunders said it, the motion is to add to the agenda.
And that's why I'm, I'm discussing it now.
Right. Where to add it or not add it?
Right.
And I understand your concern, I really do. But since I've been mayor a year and a half, there's only been two, and both of them happened to be the last two meetings, but, and I don't recall that ever happening since I've been on council, or not very often, but I do understand emergencies come up that you need to change the agenda.
May I just respond to that? You are correct.
Councilman Shanks?
There has only been two, but the budget only came out two weeks ago.
The, the-
Proposed budget.
Proposed budget. Okay, the motion is to add to the agenda. Discussion on the motion, Councilman Saunders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can appreciate Mr. Shanks expressing his concern. At all of our meetings, well, at most of our meetings, the citizens come to us, they're petitioning their government. We are that government. We are petitioning our government in Washington. We have enough data, enough facts to show how the numbers negatively impact our city if these new laws pass. We have evidence of all the progress that we have made and are still making. And I believe that we should continue to petition our government, local, state, or federal, if it's going to negatively impact our city. And I was pleased to second that motion. Thank you.
I would agree that, I'm not sure about local, but other than that, I agree with you. Local would be us. Don't know. Councilman Vogler?
And I know where Councilman Shanks is coming from on this, and I think we all understood the importance of talking about the historic tax credit at our last meeting and why that came up. I read the resolution for this so that we could have the discussion, and I'm assuming when it comes around later that the city manager, someone would actually go into detail of what it is we're talking about tonight. Because I do actually have a little bit of a problem with the way that this resolution is worded and the vagueness of it, by just saying that we're voting on a resolution to ensure that this tax reform doesn't negatively impact the city of Danville. I think that's, that's a bit of a vagueness in the message that it leads to the assumption that the tax reform in and of itself is negative for Danville, which I don't know that's a message we want to get into. I know that what we're talking about later is more specific.
Yeah, I assure all council members, if you approve to add this to agenda, I will give you plenty of time to discuss the merits of it. All I want to know is, do you want to add it to the agenda or not? Councilman Shanks?
I just, I'm going to vote on whether to add it to the agenda or not, just a minute, but I, like, my concern is, we have not seen this in a work session. And I know there's a time, but let me tell you something, they're not going to resolve the budget in the next few weeks, but there's a time issue that could be considered. But the point is, I still, the last resolution, which had all kinds of positive impacts on locality, really did not address how that was a positive impact on federal government. I'd like to have that discussion. And so that's why, and this is all about these resolutions, it's not about this one. I'm just saying, we, at the least, let's talk about them before we come and bring them to a resolution.
We plan a time for discussion, I assure you, if we get a motion to approve it.
Got it.
Any further discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
You can use this above voice vote if you're just adding it or not adding it.
Oh, okay, thank you. All in favor of adding to the agenda, please do so by show of hands. Oppose. Add it to the agenda as item F, I believe. Item F. Consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine, have previously been discussed by city council and are introduced for first reading. There will be no separate discussion of these items, and they will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by a council member or a citizen, the items will be removed from the consent agenda, consent process, and considered separately. What is your pleasure? Councilman Whittle?
Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Councilman Saunders, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner, Reverend Campbell, Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Aye. Item number two. Councilman Miller?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose a resolution to the council of the city of Danville, Virginia requesting the Commonwealth Transportation Board establish a project for the continuation of the Dan River Trail System from Danville Regional Airport along the east side of Airport Drive to U.S. Route 58.
Second to the motion. Councilman Shanks? Please call the roll.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2018 budget appropriation ordinance to provide for federal and state aviation funding for the purpose of completing design services to rehabilitate the terminal apron in the amount of $148,760 and appropriating the same for first reading.
Is there a second? Councilman Shanks. First reading. Item E, Consideration of Authorizing the City of Danville to Execute a Lease Agreement for FBI Services for General Aviation Incorporated. I open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on the public hearing of the FBI for general aviation? Anyone? Close the public hearing. What is your pleasure? Councilman Shanks.
I have a question for the city attorney first. This motion requires how many positive?
Five.
Five? Mayor, I move that we table this motion to the next meeting.
That would also require five votes.
Aye.
Second.
Is there a second to table? I do not believe there's discussion on a motion to table.
That's correct.
All in support?
Well, we do.
Please call the roll.
Yeah.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner, Reverend Campbell, Mayor Gilstrap.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
For clarification, it's tabled, when we, when we bring it from the table at the next meeting, will we need a motion to bring it from the table, or will it automatically be on the agenda?
I interpreted the motion to be to postpone to a definite time being the next meeting, which would mean it would appear back on, I think that was your intent?
That's mine too.
That's the way I interpreted it, so it'll actually be on the next agenda, it won't have to be removed from the table.
Okay.
Because it's been postponed to a definite time.
All right, thank you. Item F. Motion and to, uh, resolution to urge the President of the United States and the United States Congress to ensure that adoption of the Tax Cuts and Job Act does not negatively impact the city of Danville. Is there a motion? For the resolution?
So.
Okay. Councilman Saunders moved a resolution to urge the President of the United States and the United States Congress to ensure that adoption of the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act does not negatively impact the city of Danville. Is there a second to the motion? Councilman Jones. Discussion, Councilman Shanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Pete? Uh, I just have a couple of questions. I think the resolution clearly, that the public hasn't seen yet, uh, clearly indicates the issues that are major for the city of Danville. My question is, the first whereas says whereas Congress created the Build America Bonds program during the early years of the 1908 recession. All right. I'm sorry, 2008, I can remember it well, because it's a long one, but anyway, who is on the staff would answer some questions that I have with regard to the whereas's?
We have both our utilities director, Jason Gray, and our finance director, Michael Atkins, who can possibly back him up.
Okay, the question is, Congress created this, this, uh, this program, and the third whereas says previously implemented federal budget sequestration has led to a reduction in payments from the federal government is promised under the BAB. Is, can you explain to me what as promised means and by whom?
Let me, let me start from the very beginning. The Build America Bond program was, was built in the stimulus era as part of the package to increase jobs and to, um, to build up our infrastructure.
I understand.
And AMP, uh, Danville being a participant of these projects, invested in a coal plant and five hydro plants as part of the BAS program, so.
Well, when they, excuse me, but I think it'd be most helpful if I could go back and forth on it.
Okay.
When they did that, they were following an offer by somebody to offer a partial payment or interest or what?
Correct.
What exactly, who and what exactly was promised?
It's a federal subsidy payment for the interest portion of the, of the loan, of the bond.
Is that a contract?
Yes, it's part of the agreement, and basically because of the sequestration, they're saying that if Congress does not meet their target, sequestration takes place, and they roll back the percentage, and if the current tax reform bill passes, that percentage goes down to zero and the entity is left.
Was AMP aware of the possibility of that when they entered into the agreement?
Not at all, nobody, nobody who invested in Build America Bonds would.
That's your story, is there, is Blue Ridge Power here, is there anybody else that can clear that up?
I missed the question.
Blue Ridge, the, the other power agency that went involved, or whoever is familiar with how this program actually got dumped on.
I mean, we can give you all the credible references if you, if you want.
Well, I, I'm trying to figure out whether AMP went out and did something that is irresponsible and we bought into it, or?
The city has Build America Bonds that funded non-electric projects as well, so there, there are city projects that are facing the same problems, not just utility projects.
So these, so the city has, in the situation of those projects, the city has some record of the federal government agreeing to pay a flat rate or a percentage, and now they're not doing that?
Correct.
Okay.
May I, may I add to that, there are, in the state of Virginia, several public entities that also took advantage of Build America Bonds, and the total amount was $3.8 billion in the state of Virginia, a variety of agencies, both state and local government and educational institutions, that would all be subject to this.
Okay, and this is all because of sequestration?
Yes.
And sequestration came about because the Congress couldn't agree between the different bodies how to deal with the budget amendment?
Yep, and so like this Build America Bonds happened one year, then a few years later, sequestration came in, and then as part of sequestration, they, you know, anything subject to appropriation by Congress can be affected by it.
So the bonds that we're going after today, that we voted on today, is that part of this deal too?
No.
No, how do we know that?
Because there's no federal subsidy on the interest. We're responsible for all the interest.
So the lesson to be learned here is that we should not count on federal subsidies or promises?
I would say so, yes.
Because, I mean, this has substantial impact, and, and I'm not sure I agree with all the whereas's until we get to the, therefore it would be resolved that we contact, that we, how this would impact the city of Danville, but beyond that, I don't think we should be taking a position. I think we should be pointing out to the citizens and to our legislators how this would impact Danville, but I don't think we should be adopting resolutions, that's all I've got, thank you.
Can I speak on that?
Yes.
So if sequestration does take effect and the tax reform bill does process through the Senate, it's already passed the House, passed the House last Thursday, the city of Danville, electric customers would be responsible for $175 million over the life of the rest of the bonds, and we would have to pass that along through our rates, and that's a large increase for our customers.
That is a huge increase, and the thing is, I don't know how we got into this position where it's subject to that, but we need to learn from it. Because the federal government, the federal government has got problems, and sooner or later, they're going to have to spit, bring in spending, and every time we fight every little thing they choose to do, which this is not little, but every time we fight that, we're trying, we're prolonging the irresponsibility of our federal government.
I'm here tonight to state the facts, and if we wait till next week, the Senate already passes and then it heads to the president's desk, there's, there's not a lot of time
No, there will be a conference committee once the Senate passes something.
And I, I want our customers to know that we're fighting for them at the federal level, to see that this thing does not go through, we're doing all we can.
Excuse me one second. Councilman Shanks, you?
I'll whip it down.
Councilman Miller, and then Councilor.
I'm a little confused, we're talking about $175 million, that's just electrical cost, and then the city manager mentioned other projects that are sponsoring for these bonds, how much more, and what are they?
We, Michael couldn't elaborate on the exact projects, but back in 2010, Danville borrowed $10 million using Build America Bonds.
Cool.
For a variety of projects, I think some were electric and some were general government, but.
It was a mixture of electric fund and general government projects.
So this is not just for coal and hydroelectric generation plants?
Right, the Build America Bond program was open for any agency or governmental unit that wanted to use that to, to construct infrastructure or buildings to stimulate the economy.
So we've got $10 million plus $175 million, how much would it, would it cost us?
The, it's, the interest is about $170,000 this year, but it goes down every year.
That's right.
For the $10 million borrowing, so that, that probably could have been added to this resolution, but we were trying to get, get it out as quickly as we could and make it as accurate as possible.
So what is the total cost to the city of this?
It goes away.
Direct cost for the city bonds, next fiscal year, we would expect to receive 100, about $170,000 from the federal government to offset our interest expense on our Build America Bonds, so that would be next year's cost to the city directly. The other, what Jason is talking about for AMP, I don't know, I don't know that we have those details exactly.
I don't, I don't know what the next year cost is, I know the 175 is over the life of the bond, I don't know what the.
So it's a 20, there's 25 years left on the bond, 170 million, we were estimating $7 million per year, although the issue is, is that you pay more interest early in the borrowing, so that actual amount earlier on in the borrowing is going to be a lot higher. We were trying to get the amortization schedule from AMP to get some sort of idea of what the impact is going to be, but because the borrowing occurred by AMP, not by us, they're going to pass along the cost of, through their rates that they charge us for power, which we would then have to pass on to our customers, so Jason has some idea of how that might be, might impact the rate.
Excuse me. We'll give you a chance to answer that, but right now, Councilman Vogler had the four.
Yeah, I, first of all, I understand what we're talking about with the numbers we're looking at and things as they are today, and I mean, if this comes through the way it's looking, we're looking at a heck of a hike, but I want to go back to Councilman Shanks' points about how in the heck we got in this spot to begin with. Why, around 2008, 2009, we decided to invest heavily long-term in something that was always going to be at the whim of the federal government? I don't understand why, I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to figure out, the political winds change every so often in DC, and that things change, bonds, all this stuff has changed depending on who's in the administration. It seems like an unusual decision to me, the same way I don't understand why AMP, around that same time through 2008, decided to invest heavily in the coal power plants when they were about to have a president take office who made no bones about the fact he was going to bankrupt the coal industry. There's just a lot of bizarre decisions being made around 2008, 2009 that we're still paying for today, apparently, and this, this appears to be another one that, you know, I think Fred made a lot of good points that we need to be thinking about, and I understand what we're trying to say, we're trying to inform people about what's going on and what could potentially happen, and I agree that that's important, but we shouldn't be in this spot to begin with, and I think that's something, as Councilman Shanks said, there's lessons that need to be learned. I don't want to, uh, rest and bet all our chips on the federal government at any point in time, and I wasn't on council 10 years ago, or eight years ago, or whenever, but it just seems to me that there were some decisions going on that, through AMP or whoever, that we continue to be suffering from, whether it was plants that were never built, or now bonds that may not exist, or getting hiked up, or whatever the case may be. I just think it's important people know that this is, this is something that's basically fallen into our lap, and that's important to know how we got here. Thank you.
Not to get into political debate in any means, however, I believe the last meeting was the same thing, we addressed the federal government tax, historic tax credit. We put confidence in the federal government at that point, and I don't think that was a mistake. Before I go to Councilman Jones and Saunders, can you answer the city manager's question?
I was just wanting to add some more detail that the increases would come through in the various project rates that we're in, we're in several different generation projects, and the increases would be experienced through those increased rates, so I just wanted to add more detail to the, to the city manager's comment.
Councilman Jones.
Um, Jason, let me say thank you, this being Thanksgiving in a couple of days, because if you could simply put it, what you are telling us, along with the citizens in this community, is if this goes, there's a possibility of a, could you make it very simple so the persons who are watching and viewing this can understand exactly what you proposed for us today, because I think a lot of times, we get into all these technical terms.
Sure.
People don't understand, we're talking about a possibility of a rate increase, and council hears all the time about utility increase, could you just briefly share what we're talking about?
And I just want to say, there's a decent chance this won't be passed, I mean, that this will fall by the wayside, but I'm here that if this does pass, we have a serious problem to address, like the city manager said, it's a $7 million, give or take, based on how they allocate or amortize it across the life of the bond, costs that we're going to have to increase to our.
So let's go slow.
But.
If it's passed, $7 million, so the, so the average person can understand what we're talking, $7 million would be something that the city, possibly that the city of Danville would have to pass on to its customers.
It's roughly a cent to our residential rate.
Exactly, thank you, that's all I need.
And that would be?
Councilman Saunders.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Jason or Michael or Mr. Larkin, the resolution, the very last whereas on the first page, to comment on this, whereas these cuts to mandatory government spending projects are projected to include the elimination of promised federal payments to issue of the Build America Bonds, which could result in the loss of $175 million to Danville. Why in the world would we not ask somebody to not put that burden on us? We're forgot to AMP Ohio, that's a whole nother question, and six months of discussion, but we're in it right now, so can you comment on that very last whereas, and if it was to pass, and if it was to happen, Mr. Manager, Mr. Newman, how would we pay for it or replace it?
We would simply have to increase our power cost adjustment, because these would be power costs, our, our power cost adjustment, because we're in a non-rate study year, and we would review it during our rate study coming up in the next budget year, fiscal year 20, so those costs would initially be seen through the, the power cost adjustment, until we would allocate them into our base rate. But to your comment, these were promised federal payments, if, back in 2009, 2010s, when these bonds were issued, if we were, knew that the terms and conditions were changed today, nobody would, would have got into Build America Bonds, so we can't Monday morning quarterback this, the, the terms and conditions have changed, simply put, and if we knew that in 2009 or 2010, we wouldn't be here.
Councilman?
Did Mr. Larkin have anything to answer that, or?
I just wanted to, you would, we discussed what the impact would be on a 1,000 kilowatt residential customer per month, and it was about $10?
$10, $120 a year for a 1,000 kilowatt hour customer.
So that, and that's a 1,000 kilowatt customer, my home is averaged 1,300, so depending on what your average is, that you can extrapolate what your monthly increase would be.
Correct.
For over a period of how long?
Councilman Shanks.
You ran those numbers over a period of how long?
That's just with the first year.
First year?
Yeah, and we're expecting a $7 million increase, if it's more than that, that number's going to increase.
So that, that, that incremental adjustment would happen every year during how many years?
It depends on how, how they amortize it, if they average it out throughout the life of the bond, then, then it'll be the same rate throughout the life of the bond. But if it's a greater number at the beginning, then we'll have a higher increase than, than what the city manager stated.
Average of $1.
That was a follow-up, and I didn't mean to just.
Go ahead, you're fine.
I got other questions, but that was just a follow-up.
Oh, is, well, I think you, you got.
I was next to you. Are the, the publicly held utility companies that you're aware of, are they in the same boat?
Everybody that's participating in these projects and any other Build America Bond projects are, are doing the same thing.
Well, let me ask it a different way, did Dominion, Virginia, I mean, Dominion, American Electric Power Company and Duke Energy all participated in those type of financing?
I'm not, I'm not aware.
They were not.
They were not?
No, it's, I looked at, I have a list of all the entities in Virginia, and they're all cities, authorities, the governmental units, in, in schools and universities in the state, so no, no private companies, even publicly held private companies.
That's a telling sign that we need to think about.
Anything else, Councilman Shanks?
That's it, thank you.
Councilman Miller?
No, uh, to the end of the market, I want to know the individual system, you know, a citizen, you know, 170 million doesn't mean much, but you know, what it's going to cost everybody in this room? Say 120, 130 dollars a year, or?
The average 1,000 kilowatt hour a month customers, $10 a month extra.
$120 extra a year, we're at the charge.
That's.
That's if you're 1,000.
And it assumes that we amortize the $7 million, the average $7 million, you know, each year at $7 million, if for whatever reason it's $12 million the first year, then that'll be, you know, closer to $18, or somewhere, somewhere around there, so it really depends on, you know, what our amortization schedule is, if we have to, if AMP is responsible for higher interest rates at the beginning of this, then. of this, then, uh, the payments are much, you know, gonna be much higher. It just really depends. We don't know that information yet.
Right.
But it'll average seven million over twenty-five years.
Councilman Vogler?
I could ask the city manager, are there things being, changes that are being discussed in this proposed tax form, uh, tax reform legislation that would be beneficial to Danville? That we should be voicing support for? I mean, I know that we're putting a lot out about what we don't want, but, I mean, there, there seems to be positive changes within there. I'm not gonna debate the, the, the political side, but I'm saying that there's a number of things in this. Are, if we're gonna be weighing in on things that we don't want to change, should we also weigh in on, on potential positive things that could change if it's passed? Have we looked at those?
I got an email earlier today, um, from the V M L that, uh, had a few things for us to be concerned about, and a couple of things that we should be happy about, and I forget what those two things are, but I'll be glad to share it with council after I review it. But there was a couple of things that were mentioned that were positives.
I think, I think the urgency of this is that this will definitely impact our residents. The impact is undeniable, that it's going to affect our residents, what, average ten dollars a month? Is that right?
For the average customer.
And most could, not all, but, uh, most, well, a lot, could absorb that. My concern is the industrial side, which could be devastating to us if our industrial, which is already on the high side, in my opinion, goes up, and it could go up substantially. Is that correct?
Very correct.
So, I, regardless of who, when, or why, we need to keep our customers residential and industrial in mind, and protect them, if at all possible, from their rates increase. So I see a hand go up over here.
Yeah.
Councilman Shanks?
I, I, I don't wanna prolong this. I, I understand how important it is, uh, that we address this matter, uh, and I just wanna make sure that this is, I would rather have more time, and I think there was more time, to learn more facts. But I think with the facts given, we really, uh, well, I'll be voting in favor of the most of the resolution. However, I felt important that it be known that we should not be involved as an advocate of legislative, advocate more so than we, I mean, ever been. And I'm concerned about, one, the number of resolutions that we're presenting in the last two weeks, being, if you look at the percentage, and I'm concerned, uh, as Mr. Vogler also expressed concerns, that we're looking at cherry picking things that are one side of the, uh, budget. And, uh, if we're gonna be an advocate, we should be an advocate for both good and bad. So, uh, thank you. That's all I've got.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Reverend Campbell?
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye. Resolution approved. Communications, city manager.
I have nothing this evening, sir.
Deputy city manager.
Nothing.
City attorney?
Uh, just happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
City clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Please call roll.
Mr. Vogler?
Yeah, I, with, um, Thanksgiving being Thursday, I, I think, uh, each of us, we, we always, this time of year particularly, think about the things that we're thankful for, and I'm, uh, I'm not gonna go through each and every one of them tonight, 'cause we'd, we'd be here forever for all the things that I'm thankful for, certainly my wife and son and family and everyone, but I did just wanna take one minute to say, since we're here tonight, uh, how thankful I am for each and every member of this city council. And, um, and, and tonight, I think, was a great example. We had some great discussions and, uh, back and forth, but it, it, it stayed civil the entire time, and I think that that's, uh, one thing about our council that is, is not always the case in other places, and, um, but I, I am thankful for each and every one of you, Councilman Saunders, Councilman Shanks, Councilman Whittle, Vice Mayor Jones, uh, Councilman Miller, and, uh, Mayor Gilstrap, and of course Campbell and Buckner are not here tonight, but each and every one of you, I'm thankful and honored to serve on this city council with you, and I appreciate the time that each one of you takes, along with our city staff and our city employees as well. Uh, thankful for each and every one of you. I wish everyone out there a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Whittle?
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Mr. Buckner? Reverend Campbell? Mayor Gilstrap?
Well, I have a couple of things. One, I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but Ronnie Unbreakable Glass is, uh, on December the second, will be fighting for the, uh, super middleweight title, uh, the U N B C. And he happens to be a Danview, so, um, we wish him well, and, and hopefully, uh, he will be successful in, uh, winning the boxing title, excuse me, the, the sport boxing. Also, um, to remind everyone, I don't think we meet again, but the Christmas parade will be December the third, and I look, uh, forward to that every year, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Vice Mayor Jones?
I do, I'd like to say I'm gonna be at the fight with Ronnie Glass and wishing him all the best. If you don't know him, he works at U R W Swing by there, and wish him luck on Arnett Boulevard. Um, one thing that council members always do during the holidays, and I wanna piggyback off Councilman Vogler, that I'm going to ask the community to do it. Council members oftentimes through the holidays send some of the most happiest and funniest greetings to one another. So if nothing else, send a greeting to someone, make them smile, make them happy, just as council does, and I wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Miller?
I noticed, uh, former councilman Buddy Raleigh out in the audience today. I'm sure he just would love to be back up here.
Thank you for attending. Uh, congratulations to G W Eagles. They had an outstanding season. I think they were ten and two. Uh, had a pretty good run through the playoffs, uh, pretty cold run through the playoffs, but I know that, uh, at least three of us were out there freezing the other night. Uh, but I can tell you one thing, they're gonna be back next year in force, so...
Stick with the G W Eagles. Uh, the, uh, Christmas parade this weekend, uh, or, yeah, this weekend, so be out there. We'll be there. And Mayor Saunders, I guess we'll let you ride your motorcycle one more time.
Next weekend.
Next weekend. We'll let you ride. You didn't even hear that. Mayor Saunders, we're gonna let you ride your motorcycle one more time. Do you agree?
And, uh, happy Thanksgiving to all of council and all the public out there. Thank you.
Mr. Saunders?
Except for Dr. Miller, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, uh, city employees, our community, and to, uh, to Dr. Miller. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shanks?
Uh, yes, I just have a couple of things. Uh, would like to thank everybody that was involved, including the city, uh, forces that was involved with the Veterans Day parade. We, uh, had a good turnout at spots, and I certainly wish we had a better turnout from the city, uh, and hopefully we can increase that turnout to respect our veterans. But it was a good parade, and a lot of work, hard work went into it. I wanna thank everybody involved with that. Likewise, I'd like to thank each member of the city council and say, uh, thank you for, for what we have, and have a happy Thanksgiving with what you have. We each have families and loved ones and friends that we'll be spending holidays with, and I would like that each member of council enjoy that as long as, as long, along with all the citizens of Danville. Um, last, probably near the end of the Shop With A Cop campaign, but, uh, it's never a, a bad idea to help the local police officers to get out amongst the kids in the neighborhoods that they police, and to bring a happier Christmas to them. So I would encourage those who have not had an opportunity to, to, uh, to go ahead and support Shop With A Cop program. Speaking of shopping, uh, Black Friday is coming, and I would like, uh, I've got, I've, as my kids have gotten older and my, uh, things have changed in my life, I've been able to spend more and more of my time shopping in the city, and besides that, we have more and more shops in the city now than they were ten, fifteen years ago. So I would like to encourage our citizens to shop local, and while you're at it, on Saturday, shop small. Small Business Saturday coming up. So let's support each other in our local economies with that. And in closing, I'd just like to say, uh, there's a big game this weekend that doesn't involve Clemson, and, uh...
Oh, there's one that involves Clemson, too.
No. The, the, I am referring to the Commonwealth Cup, uh, day four, thousand seven hundred and forty-two days now in possession of the Commonwealth Cup, and Mr. Whitfield, I'm sorry, but I might not be able to say that much past Saturday, but I, I wanted to say that, and, uh, wish everybody a good holiday, uh, Thanksgiving holiday, and that's it. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.